Planning Commission meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Glenn?
Commissioner Glenn?
Here.
Commissioner Allen?
Commissioner Allen?
Here.
Commissioner Chesbrough?
Here.
Commissioner Rubio?
Here.
Commissioner Kandig?
Here.
Commissioner Glashen?
Present.
Commissioner Skogan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Commissioner Kandig, this is Jason Ortiz, Planning Services. And I just wanted to let you know if you don't mind muting yourself while you're not speaking so that we don't get any kickback on the audio here.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, do we have any additions or changes to the agenda? Commissioner Chesbrough?
I would like to remove item 10A, the resolution recommending adoption of the official streets and highway plan, please.
Is there any objection to removing the adoption of the official streets and highway plan from the agenda for this meeting? Are there any other changes to the agenda as written? Commissioner Kandig?
No, no changes for me.
All right, hearing and seeing no changes, the agenda is approved. Ms. Horton, would you lead us in the pledge tonight?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington.
All right, we're now on to the consent agenda. The only item on the consent agenda is the meeting minutes from April 4, 2022. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda as written? Commissioner Kandig?
No, no objection.
All right, hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved as written. All right, this brings us to audience participation. Three minutes for any person in the audience that would like to speak or online on any item that's not up for public hearing tonight. Madam Clerk, there's no one signed up? Is there anyone online who would like to speak on any topic other than the public hearings tonight? No? All right, is there any objection to closing public comment? Seeing none here, Commissioner Kandig?
No objection.
All right, audience participation is closed. Next is a public hearing for quasi judicial matter. The first matter is PC Resolution 22-05, conditional use permit in accordance with MSB 17.60, conditional use permit for marijuana retail facility located at 2888 South Clapp, tax ID 1011B01T001-2. Do I have to read the MTRSs? Within Township 7 North, Range 1 West, Section 19, Seward Meridian. The applicant is Kirby Coleman for green degree with staff Peggy Horton. Are we expecting Mr. Coleman tonight? If we would have a brief recess while Mr. Weisenhut contacts Mr. Coleman? Recession at 6:04.
Yeah, this is Bill Kandig, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, Mr. Kandig.
I think this resolution, this property falls in the Knick Fairbrough Community Council.
Okay, Mr. Kandig, I'm going to stop you here because we took a brief recess. What wants to?
I'm not speaking to the resolution.
I understand, but we can't be talking about anything because we're not on record. So I need you to not say anything until we go back on record and then we'll go ahead and discuss that. Thank you.
Okay. Yep.
All right, we'll resume the April 18, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. We're on PC Resolution 22-05, which I've already read. We'll now go into ex parte questions. So to members of the Planning Commission, do you or any member of your immediate family have a substantial financial interest in any property affected by this decision? Or will you recognize a foreseeable profit as a result of this decision? Seeing those here, Mr. Kandig?
This operation is in the Knick Fairbrough Community Council and as president of that community council, I've already taken some action on this, so I'll have to refuse.
All right, so that's kind of an answer to question two, but we can skip ahead. Is there any opposition to Commissioner Kandig recusing himself from this matter? None here. All right, Mr. Kandig, I will ask you to not participate. Apparently you can listen, but you will not be voting or commenting on this. Thank you. To the remaining members of the commission, have you received or otherwise engaged in ex parte contact with the applicant, appellant, other interested parties, or members of the public concerning the application either before, during, or after this matter was submitted for decision? Seeing all no's, to the remaining members, are you able to be impartial in this decision? All yeses? All right. Ms. Horton, would you give us a presentation, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello, I'm Peggy Horton, planner two for the Matsu Borough, offering an overview of the staff report for PC Resolution 22-05. This is located on page 11 of your packet. This is a conditional use permit application for a marijuana retail facility located at the intersection of South Clapp Street, Fairview Loop, and the Knick Goose Bay Road. Retail facility will be a 1,200 square foot structure that was placed on the property in 2020, but requires relocation to comply with the building setback requirements. The new foundation is constructed and ready for the building to be moved. The facility is located on a 1.8 acre lot that was created as a result of a right of way acquisition when the city of Wassila and the Matsu Borough did the project for this Clapp Street, Fairview Loop, signalized intersection with Knick Goose Bay Road. Public road right of ways surround the property and Clapp, South Clapp Street access point was designed and constructed during that road project. As a result of the public noticing, the Knick Fairview Community Council responded with a letter of nonobjection. Staff received one comment from a member of the public. The objection noted the proximity of the use to a school bus route. Staff notes that marijuana-related conditional uses shall not be located within 1,000 feet of school grounds. However, the proximity to a school bus route or school bus stops is not a factor addressed in code. The application meets the standards for approval of a conditional use permit with the recommendations listed on page 89 of your packet. Prior to operation of the facility, staff is recommending a condition of approval requiring the building be moved to comply with the setbacks. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Horton. Mr. Coleman, would you like to give a presentation? If so, you'll have 15 minutes.
All right, here we go. Well, first, I'd like to say thank you for this evening. Sorry, apologize for being late. Usually I'm here on time. It's like my fifth time before the board and usually here early and usually we're not up till like nine or 10. So being first is first for me, so apologize. I do appreciate you guys waiting for me. Just to give you a little rundown on what we're doing, it's pretty standard retail operation. We do have a couple of retails here in the borough, Matsu Borough. We've always, I think we've done well business with the borough, haven't had any major issues. We have, you know, like any other business, have gotten some violations with the state, but they're all very minor. We're all addressed and nothing vicious or horrendous there. We're just ready to do business in the borough. Actually, this location is actually just going to be taking this, one of our stores are going to be kind of moving up the road. But we did have to file a complete new application with the state, brand new permit here with the borough just because they're not transferable. So we will take, we do have a store green degree. It is on KGB, it's mile 2.3, so it's just a couple of miles down the road. This, once this is approved and the building gets moved, we will be moving our store up there essentially. As far as the building being moved, it was a big snafu. It's about, you know, second time I ran into setback issues with what I'm doing.
Could anyone on the phone please mute your line?
So, yeah, I mean, essentially, I thought it was good. The road that it's a setback in is a section line easement. It's encroaching by three feet and it's an obliterated road. DOT doesn't really plan on using it. Would have been nice to get a variance. Apparently that's not something that the Planning Commission offers. And if it's not, the current billing would have to be transferred to ownership because the current owner is the one who put it there. So there's no variance in that situation for any kind of setback easement issue. So regardless, you know, come out of my pocket to move the building and then we should be good to go. We were hoping to have the building moved towards the beginning of this month, but just because of the weather, the situation of lifting the building, we still got to pour some foundation below it. So we just wanted to let it warm up to where we don't have to heat the foundation. So kind of just saving a few bucks doing it a little bit later. We do have a contractor in mind to move the building. He's just going to lift it, move it three feet forward. We're going to pour our foundation, layer of brick, and then set the building down, strap it down, and build a front porch, and finish the inside. Interior needs a little bit of work, as you guys might have seen from the pictures illustrated. But aside from that, I was looking forward to doing business with the borough like we have been and appreciate you guys' consideration. Thank you for your time. I did want to bring up one thing that, you know, I've actually noticed some new faces here, so congratulations for making the board here. We had been addressed a couple of times with previous CUPs that we had applied for certain hours. It was planning, it was the processors. It was their recommendation that it was approved as applied for. The Planning Commission have, you know, I just felt like it was some personal attack against cannabis and everyone has their own opinion, but you know, your job is to see that it fits within the standards of the code. And that being said, you know, would follow, my recommendation would be to follow the process recommendation, just the store hours, you know, where people were talking about hypotheticals of what might happen at 2:00 AM. And we actually aren't even open, it's just we apply for those hours with the hopes that we're available to be open during that time. So we, right now, we're running like till 10:00, 10:00 PM. But later on, you know, the valley grows, summertime hours, we'll see where we get, but you know, we just want to be able to have that availability to be open till that late. So we don't have to appear before you guys to switch our hours, which we've had to do before. And the Planning Commission did make us reduce our hours and then we did go, we did file an appeal and we were successful in that appeal. So it was a waste of, you know, taxpayers' time and, you know, my time and I did get a refund, but it was still time. So appreciate you guys' consideration. I think that's, I'm going to talk yours off.
Are there any questions from the commission for the applicant?
I have a quick question. Why are you moving your store? Do you not own the piece of property you own now and you own this one? Or what's the reason for the move?
Yes, correct, we actually don't own either one. We just found a longer term lease, it's a better location, less overhead as far as the lease, less, you know, and the location's better. Yeah, where we're at now, we're just not too happy. The landlord wants to sell out to somebody that wants to do essentially the same thing and he didn't want to renew our lease because of that, so.
Are you on both, does you and your partners do just the retail side or do you do the other side too?
Yeah, so it's just me, no partners involved. But yeah, we do cultivation, manufacturing, and retail. They call it vertically integrated, so we do all three facets of the industry. It's a big family business, but I'm the only one that's on the marijuana license and has a financial stake or interest in the company.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Coleman? Thank you. With that, we'll open the public hearing on PC Resolution 22-05. All right, nobody has signed up to speak about Resolution PC 22-05. Is there anyone on the phone that would like to speak to Resolution PC? Nobody's on the phone? All right, is there any objection to closing the public hearing? Hearing and seeing none? Public hearing is closed. All right, I will entertain a motion.
I move Resolution PC 22-05.
Second.
All right, it has been moved by Commissioner Chesbrough and seconded by Commissioner Allen to approve PC Resolution 22-05. Is there any discussion?
As Mr. Coleman said, he's been here before and I've been fortunate to be here when he's been here, so I do appreciate all the work you put into this and thanks for coming tonight.
Mr. Allen?
I've read the proposal and it looks good to me, so best of luck to you, sir.
All right, any other discussion? I too have been here with Mr. Coleman a few times. I'm a proponent of changing the hours, but as he pointed out, the BOA through their actions has shown that we need to go with the state and the assembly has not made other hours, so I'm not going to waste any more of his time or anyone else's time suggesting an amendment. So is there any objection to approving PC Resolution 22-05 as written? Hearing and seeing none, it is approved. All right, Commissioner Kandig, are you with us still?
Yes, I am.
All right, so the next resolution, PC 22-09, conditional use permit with MSB 17.60 conditional uses, allowing for the operation of a marijuana retail facility located at 2893 South Big Lake Road, unit number four, tax ID 1783B04L001, within Township 17 North, Range 3 West, Section 21, Seward Meridian. The applicant is, and I apologize, Jolynn Jillson, staff Mr. Weisenhut. So ex parte questions to the commission. Do you or any member of your immediate family have a substantial financial interest in any property affected by this decision? Or will you recognize a foreseeable profit as a result of this decision? Seeing none here in the room, Commissioner Kandig?
No.
All right, to the commission, have you received or otherwise engaged in ex parte contact with the applicant, appellant, other interested parties, or members of the public concerning the application either before, during, or after this matter was submitted for decision? Seeing all no's on the board, Commissioner Kandig?
No.
All right, and to the commissioners, are you able to be impartial in this decision? Seeing all yeses here, Commissioner Kandig?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Weisenhut, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, my name is Mark Weisenhut. I'm the planner assigned to process this request for a conditional use permit. The operation is known as the Green Spot and it's related to Planning Commission Resolution 22-09, which is on, begins on page 93 of your packet. This applicant is proposing to operate in their facility on unit four of the existing commercial structure. They are currently operating in unit one of that same building. The proposed facility size is 1,462.5 feet and the operation, the older operation is approximately 567 square feet. And they originally obtained their CUP in 2017. During the public notice process, we mailed out notices to all property owners within 600 foot radius as well as to the Big Lake Community Council. That was done on March 1, 2022. Total of 15 notices were mailed. The permit application notification was published on March 2, 2022 in the Frontiersman and we posted the application material on the borough's website on February 25. The public notice, application material, and requests for comments were emailed to all members listed in the Big Lake Community Council and that was sent on February 25, 2022. We did not receive any comments from the public or from the Big Lake Community Council. As we reviewed this, we found that the proposal does meet all standards of Matsu Borough Code and on page 103 of your application, you'll find that we do recommend approval with five conditions. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Do we have any questions from the commission for Mr. Weisenhut? Mr. Chesbrough?
I have just one question and I read that the, there needs to be evidence, well, the license premises changed thing through AMCO and we didn't make a, we didn't say we needed that as a, why did we not say that was a requirement, I guess?
Thank you for that question. The process is a little bit different in this scenario because they're moving from one side of a building to another. It's not like they're moving from one location across town and would need another license under that circumstance. This, it's a matter of filling out a form and what happens is the state sends our office that form and we actually have to sign that form that we're okay with it. And so it comes to us no matter what. Thank you.
Mr. Glenn?
Yeah, how far are they moving exactly? 150 feet? Okay, then you're in the same building or, okay, just a strip mall or something? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Weisenhut from the commission? Commissioner Kandig, do you have any questions for Mr. Weisenhut?
No questions, I'm familiar with the business.
All right, thank you. All right, the applicant, you now have 15 minutes to make your presentation. Please spell your last name, which I forgot to tell Mr. Coleman to do.
My name is Jolynn Jillson, my last name is J.I.L.L.S.O.N. And I don't have a presentation to present, but we are open for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission for the applicant? Commissioner Chesbrough?
Good evening and thanks for coming tonight. I just have a question about the hours because your original, your original permit was 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Is there a reason this was changed?
Not in particularly our hours. My employees start at 9:30 in the morning and we do not sell any marijuana product until 10:00. not sell any marijuana product until 10:00 a.m. So I think that's where I may have confused on my application. My employees start at 9:30 in the morning, we close at 10:00 p.m. So sales are not made until 10:00 a.m. So between 10:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. is when sales are made.
Can I ask one other question of Mr. Weisenhut? Does that matter at all with the permit that this is, these are different hours than were approved originally?
Thank you for that question. And through the chair, ultimately, it only matters if they want to expand their hours. This reduces their operation by an hour, but if that's what they're currently operating, that's what, what's what they've asked for. Certainly, they could have asked for an 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. if they wanted to, but still only operate within that 10 to 10 timeframe. But 10 to 10 is what they asked for.
So I'm going to jump in. So for clarification, the only hours that matter is when they're actually selling products to the, to the public, right? They can be in there at 7:00 a.m. sweeping. It doesn't matter.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, do we have any other questions from the commission? Commissioner Allen?
Yeah, I'll just ask the same question I asked the last gentleman. Why are you moving?
It's a larger space.
Okay, great.
Three times the larger space.
Question here.
Certainly, Commissioner Glenn.
So if, if they change your hours of operation, does that have to come back to the planning board if they expand or decrease the hours?
Through the chair, if, if they would like to operate outside of 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., they would need to return.
Okay.
It's possible if the board wanted to, the board could approve, could adopt an amendment to the draft resolution and change it to larger hours. So it would prevent them from having to come back if, if the board wishes.
Okay, thank, thank you.
All right, any other questions for the applicant from the members here? Seeing none, Commissioner Kendeck, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No questions.
All right, thank you. With that, we will open the public meeting, public hearing for PC Resolution 22-09.
Someone signed up.
All right, is there anyone on the phone that would like to speak? No one on the phone. Any objection to closing that lengthy public hearing? Mr. Weisenhut?
If I may, Mr. Mr. Chair, bring the attention to page 124 of your packet. And this is a site plan that's color coded through the whole building. And on the top side of the page, you'll see a highlighted green facility. Again, that's page 124. And the, the green location is where they're currently operating. And that pink location that it's not quite that large. I believe they've modified the location of the walls. Is that correct? Yep. But essentially, that south side of the building is where they're located or where they're proposing to, to go to.
Thank you, Mr. Weisenhut. Let's see, did we close the public meeting? All right. So the chair will now entertain resolution for, or motion for PC Resolution 22-09.
I move Resolution 22-09.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Chesbrough. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. It's been moved by Commissioner Chesbrough and seconded by Commissioner Glenn. Commissioner Chesbrough, any questions or comments?
No, you've obviously been operating pretty well, and so I'm glad you can expand.
Commissioner Glenn, any comments? Any discussion on PC Resolution 22-09? Seeing none here, Commissioner Kendeck, any discussion?
None.
All right. Is there any objection to passing PC Resolution 22-09 as written? Seeing none here, Commissioner Kendeck?
No objection.
All right. PC Resolution 22-09 is approved. Moving on to legislative matters. PC Resolution 22-16, a resolution, the Matanus Sussitna, you can't spell things wrong in here, it messes me up, Borough Planning Commission recommending assembly adoption of an ordinance amending MSB 17-05 to exclude the Port McKenzie Special Use District. Staff Tracy McDaniel's.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. My name is Tracy McDaniel. I'm the asset manager in the Land and Resource Management Division of the Borough. I am here today presenting a resolution to the Planning Commission recommending that the Assembly amend Title 1705 Essential Service Utilities and exempt the port district from that title. Title 1705 requires a very extensive public notice process, and the land management division oversees the borough land within that, that special use district. And we have a public notice process. Anytime there is any land use, or I shouldn't say land use, but leases, long-term leases, even short-term leases, we have to do a public, 30-day public notice process on that. And then it will go in front of the Port Commission and the Assembly for approval if we can come to an agreement on a lease. And there is another public notice process and public hearing at that time. The port district is unique as it's the only commercial industrial land that we have in the borough that is, I would consider zoned outside of any of the three cities. The Title 1723 that I have outlined in your packet, it provides for the orderly development and standards of the, the, I think there's four districts within that, port districts, for commercial, there's a conservation district, and we have industrial, and then commercial buildings, which are off to the north. And it's also, the uses are supported in the Port McKenzie Master Plan, the 2016 update. And it goes through each district, what the key developments are for each district. And then it provides a map, a utility map, that has outlined the future development of all the utilities that would be anticipated at a port in the future. The borough would love to see, you know, a water supply and treatment facility down there as development occurs, a wastewater treatment plant. Of course, we're going to have pipeline corridors, possibly even conveyors or some type, types of vacuum systems, and eventually maybe even a substation to handle some of the electrical power load that is, hopefully in the future will be needed. 1723 also requires a port development permit, which regulates the development standards and requires public notification prior to issuance of the permit. This is an administrative permit. It is something that does go out for a 14-day public notice process. It will have to go out in a 600-foot radius of where the development is occurring. So if it's long and linear, it would be 600 feet out from that lineal type development. And then there are other established state and federal guidelines that most developments would fall under, given the types that the industrial and commercial uses that are allowed down there. Today, I met with the Port Commission and presented the, the resolution to them, and they passed it unanimously. They had one amendment to it, and it was a whereas, it's a clause that they like to have in their resolution saying that Port McKenzie is the most important piece of property within the Matsu Borough, period. So, and I did have a conversation with Commissioner Glasson today, and he sent an email to me, and unfortunately, I was gone. And I, when I got back, I was trying to gather a few things that you had mentioned in your email. And, and you talk about if the application only goes through 1723, there is no public hearing or interaction. And I think that the reason for that is because it's already zoned. It's a, it's a zoned area, the, with special use districts for certain types of development. And then you, and I understand 1705, there's at least two actual public meetings with a wider notification area. That is not defined in 1705. It does not define what the, the, the public notice area would be. At least, I have never found anything. So I, I guess I could ask the planning department if that's something that is set by the planning director, or is it to the satisfaction of the applicant? In some cases, myself, I recommend that we go out a mile in some certain cases when I do public notice because I understand that these are large parcels. 600 feet is not enough area. And in an example for this is the CAE lease that I have been working on for a long time now. But I did amend the public notice a month or so ago, and I asked that we went out one mile. And the comments I received back were, one was the same comment that was received during the first public notice. And then I, I, I actually hit another owner that is south of the port in support of the lease. And then there, there were a few that came through email that were in support. So, let's see, and I also, you questioned the application, and you couldn't find it there. I did make copies. It's a four-page, it's a pretty extensive application requirement. And the things that need to be submitted, if the commissioners are interested in taking a look at this application, there are many copies here. So if the commissioners approve the resolution, I would like to request that there be an amendment to the resolution that addresses something that I just noticed this afternoon in 1705. And that is, got a lot of stuff here. The language would also need to be add, the language of, and the Port McKenzie Special Use District boundary would need to be added to the end of 1705-040A. And I'm available for any questions.
All right, do we have any questions for Ms. McDaniel's? I apologize, is it McDaniel or with an S?
No S.
No S, McDaniel.
How many pieces of private property are there within a mile of the port?
That's a, I don't have anything in front of me. They are larger parcels. Siri is to the south. The Siren Homestead, which has been subdivided throughout the years, is to the south. And, well, if you look on your map, actually, there's a map on page 303
Okay.
of your packet. It shows the boundaries, and everything to the south is private. Siri does own directly across the street from the old MPI lease lot. And then in 14 North, 4 West, Section 35, that to the south is, I think most of that is private land. And I, there's a lot of private land, there's a lot, there's state land, a lot of private land along the inlet. Many years ago, there, there were, there were a lot of people that settled across the inlet there. And the access for many years to that was from, was boat. And so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further, Commissioner Glenn? Mr. Chesbrough?
So I may be just confused. So what I thought I heard you say is that this would, if you did the utility, it would need an administrative permit. Did I hear you say that?
It, it would be a port development permit, which is administered internally. It would, it would be signed by the borough manager. It would go to public notice. Those comments would be received. And then the staff report would be written and presented to the manager for approval or denial. And it would be based on the requirements in this permit. They have to re-submit pretty extensive, it's a very extensive permitting process for a large development. We've had these port development permits for Coal Alaska wanting to bring in their scales and a mechanism where they can dump their super sacks of cement into and then load it into the trucks. They did a port development permit for that. It wasn't very extensive. They do rent the two buildings down there, and they use them for storage for the super sacks of cement.
And just, did I hear you say it would be 14 days for public comment?
Well, I'm not familiar with 17. That's not my code that I operate on, but are you, 14 days? This code falls under planning's code. But in, in the past, this development permit was brought from planning over to land management due to the, the employee used to work in planning and now works in land management. He's been the only one. 15 days, I'm sorry.
Okay. And then just one other thing. And one of the things that says in there, whereas is, is that it's consistent with the cities within the borough. But my understanding is the cities have their own planning departments and their own public notice rules as well. Am I wrong about that? Because it doesn't seem like it's exactly the same thing as, as excluding the cities.
Well, it, the cities are zoned. And yes, they have their own planning department and their own public notice process, which, yes, we do have our planning department, and we do have our land management department that oversees the borough lands. So this, in, with the layers, it's just an additional layer of public noticing. In the beginning, it's public notice through land management for 30 days. You know, so, and then if the lease is executed, then when they, they go to file their permit, and it's all, I, back up just a second, the lease is also publicly heard through the Port Commission or the Planning Commission, and then on to the Assembly for approval. So there's those public hearings. Then, once they have their lease, they have to apply for the port development permit when they're ready to start. And typically, there are timeframes within the lease document that states that you will apply for or receive your port development permit by this date. We, we definitely put time limits on that so that we can keep progress going. That's, well, that's the idea is to keep the progress going.
Thank you. That helps me.
Mr. Scoggan? Ellen Rubio? Any other questions for, for staff? Commissioner Kendeck, do you have any questions for staff?
No questions.
All right, the chair has a few questions. Do we have a copy of that Port, Port Commission Resolution?
No, because it wasn't signed. I, I had to leave the meeting to come here. So it's not signed.
Okay. So, um, turning the page. Say I wanted to rent a piece of property at the port. Would I need to have a business development plan that showed pipelines that I was going to run and details about what I was going to do with that property? Or it just required that whatever I did was in accordance with the specific port district that I'm in?
You're being very hypothetical here.
Well, what I'm saying is, is you said, I apologize for interrupting, that there's a 30-day public notice period when there's a lease enacted.
Mm-hmm.
But at the time that lease comes about, people have maybe an idea for what they're going to do, but potentially not their final development plans?
They have a timeframe. They have to meet the timeframe in the lease. We're not going to, the idea is not to lease a piece of property and just let it sit. We, we want to encourage development. And that's the purpose for the timeframes that are put in the lease, which the very first thing you do is you apply for a port development permit. And then from there, you have construction timeframe deadlines. And then you will be operating by this date. Yes, those timeframes could be adjusted, but that requires assembly approval.
So in order to lease a piece of raw ground at the port, you need to have a full-on business plan and design project?
You bet.
I find that surprising. Okay. So moving on to 17 dot 23. If I understand the public process there, there is a 15-day public notice in the paper for property owners within 600 feet of the project. Is there a public hearing with that?
No. It's administered through the manager.
Okay. And, uh, how that difference from, differs from 17 dot 05 is, under 17 dot 03, it's just a mailing to people within 600 feet, correct?
Correct. And, correct. Yeah.
Okay.
But the development was approved under the lease.
Okay.
Under Title 23.
I'm still going forward here.
Okay.
So under 17 dot 05, the public notice, not only does there need to be a plan for the public notice, but three notices in the newspaper, public postings in local areas, public service announcements on local radio, and mailings as appropriate. That's, seems to me to be significantly more, there is still not a hearing, but it seems to me to be quite a bit bigger effort to notify the public of what's happening on borough property.
And I agree with this. I totally agree with it. But when you're talking about an area that is zoned, specific districts for industrial and commercial, it, it differs from, and a good example is the MEA Fish Hook to Wasilla Utility Line. How many properties that crosses? Those are a ton of private properties, very little borough land that I have seen. I don't know about the other agencies. But that required an extensive public process because of the private lands. And that's how this was developed, this 1705 was developed because of the new hospital being put in. It went across a lot of private lands as well as borough lands. And it brought out the public. And they, I, I don't, I remember when it happened, I was here, but I wasn't thick into it. And I, unfortunately, you know, the people that developed the title, well, I think Mark would be the only one that was here during that time. So I, the rest of them have retired. The lucky ones.
All right. And any further questions for Ms. McDaniel? Commissioner Kendig? Uh, yes, Mr. Weisenhut?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Planning Commission, Mark Weisenhut for the Metzger Borough. So I think the, the major difference that isn't being shouted from the mountaintops here is, um, the port is, as Tracy had mentioned, zoned. And so there's no private properties that are going to be highly impacted. Whereas those standards you see in 1705 were specifically made because of the potential impact to private properties and private homes and those potential value impacts. And that's why there's so much public notice involved with that 1705 currently. And the port in and of itself is the, the home and the mainstay of this is where we want industrial things to go. This is the appropriate place for these things to live. And, uh, 1705 being the third, the third step in red tape is what we're looking at here. The first would be that lease with the port, port commission taking a look at it, the assembly approving it, plus the notices that are associated with that. Then the notices that are associated with the port development permit, while there's no public hearing associated with that, there's definitely a mailing, as Tracy had said. And this is the third, the third red tape that would be applicable. And it's, it's quite dramatic, given that there's very little to no private homes or anything developed anywhere close, because this is a pretty vast area. I don't know what the, the square miles is, but a big area for this industrial use. And so ultimately, I think we're trying to be a good government with, without the extra red tape and saying, if we already got two processes, do we really need a third? And I think that's the goal of removing the port from this process.
Mr. Weisenhut is follow-up since you stepped to the podium. So if we remove this process and put it all under the port, you could run a fuel pipeline, which is not, does not have property line setbacks, is an underground utility, right on the edge of the property of the port boundary, without, with a notice, but no public hearing or anything for adjacent landowners to speak.
I would, I would respectfully disagree with the, the no notice, because that would go through the lease process as well as the port development permit process still.
All right. Any, any questions for Mr. Weisenhut? Commissioner Kendig?
Thank you.
No questions.
All right. We'll go ahead and move on to the public meeting. Do we have anyone signed up to talk?
No.
Do we have anyone on the phone that would like to talk? Is there any objection to closing this public hearing? Public comment? Nope. Any objection, Mr. Kendig?
No objection.
All right. Public hearing is closed. I will now entertain a motion for PC Resolution 22-16.
I move Resolution 22-16.
All right. Commissioner Chesbrough, the mover. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
All right. Once again, Commissioner Chesbrough has, has made the motion with second by Commissioner Glenn. Commissioner Chesbrough, any comments?
I, I am usually reluctant to try not to have, to get rid of public process, but it seems like there is a little bit of redundancies here. And the fact that the, that it, that the area is zoned and somebody decided that a long time ago to zone it and to try to make it a wonderful, yeah, however many years ago that was, to make it a wonderful place for us to make lots of money for the borough. I think probably this extra redundancy is unnecessary.
Commissioner Glenn, any comments?
Yeah. I actually believe that port is going to financially save this borough in the end. And I see a, a bunch of development, anything we can do to get rid of a bunch of red tape to keep people out of there, we need to do that and assist them. So that's all I got to say.
Any other comments from commission members here? Any comments from Commissioner Kendig?
No comments.
All right. The Chair would just like to say, I do not like redundancy, I do not like red tape, but I think back to the change that was before us to allow the landfill to export gravel without a conditional use permit. The landfill's been designated a landfill longer than this has been a port. The landfill can move that gravel around all they want without a permit. The only thing we're restricting them, or we're restricting them to get the permit Granted, there's five new members. The concern there was removing the public process. So personally, I, I feel like I'd be disingenuous if I said this was a good idea to, to reduce that public process. But is there any objection to PC Resolution 22-16 as written?
I'll object to it. Madam Clerk?
Do you want to do a roll call vote or the commissioner?
I guess we need to.
Oh, and just for clarification, a yes vote means that PC Resolution 2216 passes, which would remove the requirements of MSB 17 dot 05 from the Port McKenzie Special Use District, similar to the way it's applied in the cities within the borough.
Could we amend the resolution to, as I had mentioned earlier, to add?
There, there was two spots where the cities were listed.
Correct.
040.
One second, we're going to bring it up. I've got it here. Well, we have to bring it up.
Okay.
Someone needs to move to actually amend it?
Yes. Thank you.
Is it a clerical change or is it?
It's just clerical. It's, it's to add the.
Okay. Yep.
It's 1705-040A and adding to the end, or deleting and between, and Wasilla, comma, and the Port McKenzie Special Use District boundary.
I'll speak into the mic. This is Jason Ortiz. We're going to make a change real quick. Bring it up on the screen so everyone can see. And then I guess you can read it, Chair, Mr. Chair, you can read it for Commissioner Kendig
While we're doing this, can I ask a question?
Certainly. Commissioner Chesbrough?
So I'm wondering about, I mean, this comment that's here, that, do I understand this? This chapter applies to municipal utilities that extend beyond city boundaries. Got that. I understand that. And the port district boundary into unincorporated borough lands? What does that mean? I don't understand what that means. That's without, outside the, the actual?
Thank you for that question through the Chair. Effectively, that means everywhere else within the borough, that's not incorporated into a city. So outside of those boundaries to the unincorporated area. So for example, if you live in between Wasilla and Palmer, let's say you're on Trunk Road, that's an unincorporated area of the borough.
So, so basically what it means is, within the city, that rule doesn't apply. But once that pipeline or whatever crosses out of the city boundary into borough land, then the rule applies. And it's unincorporated because it's not a city.
So, so this says it doesn't apply to the, within the cities, but it does apply beyond the cities?
That's exactly correct. So we let, we let the cities do their own planning and do their own zoning. And effectively, this permit will continue to apply everywhere but the cities. And if it's adopted as proposed, the recommendation would also cut the port special use district also out. So it would not apply there as well.
But not beyond the boundaries of the special use district? Correct. Am I right?
It would, it would apply to places beyond those boundaries. So for example, it would apply all the way up north through Willow, Squetna, the Butte, Talkeetna, all of those other places that are not within the city limits and not within the port.
So the, so the rule applies beyond the boundaries, but it doesn't apply with, it's an exception within the boundaries?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, so the idea is that if you're running a gas pipeline from like A-shire down to the port, outside of the port district, you'd have to go through that 1705. But once you hit the port and anything inside the port, you wouldn't have to. All right. So staff has recommended an amendment to clean up some, an oversight. Do we have, should I read it first?
No. I think you need to see if there's anyone that wants to offer an amendment or make a motion to amend it.
All right. So do we have a motion to clean up this oversight to a different section of the same 17 dot 05?
I'll make a motion to straighten up 17 dash 05. Make a motion for amendment.
All right. Commissioner Glenn, do we have a second? Mr. Scoggan has seconded. For Commissioner Kendig, I will go ahead and read this. So the change is to MSB 17 dot 05 dot 040, type 2 Essential Service Utility A. All proposed type 2 Essential Service Utilities shall require a public involvement program in accordance with a public participation plan submitted by the
in accordance with a public participation plan submitted by the utility in all areas of the borough, excluding the cities of Houston, Palmer, Wasilla, and then the addition is and the Port McKenzie Special Use District boundary. Is there any objection to the amendment as written? Seeing none here, Commissioner Kendeck?
No objection.
All right. So we were back to the motion as amended. We're ready for a roll call vote unless there's any further discussion. Seeing no further discussion, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Glenn?
Yes.
Commissioner Scoggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Glashen?
No.
Commissioner Chesbrough?
Yes.
Commissioner Rubio?
Yes.
Commissioner Kendeck?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. Correspondents, unfinished business, new business, commission of business. Mr. Ortiz, any upcoming agenda items, like a fishing trip or something we should know about?
Yes, fishing trips on, on the borough. No, nothing coming up. The only thing I do want to remind everyone, well, actually, I wanted to welcome Commissioner Kendeck. Haven't had a chance or an opportunity to meet him in person, but I look forward to that. Quasi judicial items that are on the, that we heard today and also things that have gone on in the past, please keep those in mind that, that you please refrain from discussing the items or doing your own fact-finding missions or anything like that. And I do want to remind everyone to please review Oba Meeting Acts stuff, because it's really important that everything's, that everything is done correctly. So if anyone has questions regarding that, come see me or the Law Department here, the law, and they can assist you with that. That was it.
So does that count for your comment, section two?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
No comments.
No comment from law? All right. Commissioner Scoggan? Commissioner Glenn? Commissioner Chesbrough?
Again, I'd like to thank staff. The reports that we get are very clear and understandable and complete, and I appreciate all the work that goes into doing that, because I know it's not really a simple task. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen?
No comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Kendeck?
No comment.
Commissioner Rubio?
No comment.
All right. I'd just like to welcome Commissioner Kendeck. Look forward to having some good discussions with you over the next eight months and look forward to you wrestling these guys to be the Chair. We are adjourned at 7:12 PM.